The December 2nd meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. All rise for the political agents.
[inaudible]
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 Prior to the start of each council meeting, and our council meetings are generally the first and third Tuesdays of each month, we provide an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government. The period of time covered by open podium is roughly 6:30 to 6:55. In the council chambers, if you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office by noon of the meeting date with your name, the subject matter you would like to discuss, and your phone number. If time permits, after scheduled speakers, we do provide an opportunity for people to, on a more spontaneous basis, address the council at that same time. These portions of the meeting are not recorded or televised, and if you have any questions, again, contact the city manager's office at 949-8412. We start off with going immediately into an HRA meeting. Roll call for that meeting.
Councilmember Butcher-Westrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Case.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Chair Tara Lukin.
Aye. The first item of business for the HRA meeting is approval of the minutes from the HRA meeting held on Tuesday, September 2nd, 2014. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections to those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The second item is to adopt a resolution certifying the 2015 HRA property tax levy to be $200,000 and approving the 2015 HRA budget of $200,000. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Chair, members of the HRA. The last meeting of the year, the last HRA meeting, council meeting of the year, the HRA and city council will need to certify their property tax levy and budget for 2015. Back in September, you set a preliminary levy and budget at $200,000, and between that September action and now, that levy could only be lowered, it could not be raised. Actually, the $200,000 is a levy that we've been going with for many years now, several years, and as you know, these, this budget and this levy goes to support our housing programs that are part of our HRA, our first-time homebuyer program, and rehab program as well, and the administrative costs associated with that. So once again, we're asking you tonight to set the same budget levy that you preliminarily approved in September and have approved for the past several years.
Any questions for Mr. Getchell? Is there a motion?
I move to adopt the resolution certifying the 2015 property tax levy to be $200,000 and approving the 2015 budget of $200,000 as reviewed by the council.
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next item is a request to adopt a resolution directing preparation of a modification to the TIF plan for TIF District 16, and request that the city of Eden Prairie hold a public hearing on the modification of the TIF plan. Mr. Getchell.
Chair, members of the HRA, I can quickly cover both this item and the next because they're pretty much the same thing. We have two TIF districts, District 16 and 17, that we're setting a future public hearing for on January 20th to consider the extension of these districts that may expire at the end of next year. And you may recall that we've taken actions with previous districts that were set up in shorter timeframes and are required by law, for instance, setting up a 10-year TIF district for these housing projects when they were originally constructed to support affordable units or a percentage of affordable units at both Lincoln Park and at the Colony as well, and Rolling Hills. So both of these actions are similar to what we've done in the past, where we're looking at a possible extension of those districts for possibly up to 10 years or what may be allowed by state law, to continue to allow the units to remain affordable, and also to have budgets within those TIF plans where there's qualifying costs, where there's continual reinvestment in those properties, so the dollars actually match dollars that go back into maintaining the properties. But tonight's action on both Item 4 and 5 are to direct staff to prepare a modification to the plan and then hold a hearing, and then the actual hearing and actions would take place in early 2015.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Getchell? Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt a resolution directing preparation of a modification to the tax increment financing plan for TIF District 16, and request that the city of Eden Prairie hold a public hearing on the modification of the TIF plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion on TIF District 17?
Adopt a resolution directing preparation of the modification to the tax increment financing plan for TIF for District 17, and request that the city of Eden Prairie hold a public hearing on the modification of the TIF plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
HRA is adjourned. First item of council business tonight, then, is a donation for Eden Prairie Players. Mr. Luthammer, are you going to do that?
Yes, Your Honor, council members. Andy Turner, who's been involved in the past with the Eden Prairie Players, has given a donation of cash, $400, to be used towards technical equipment, and so we're thankful for that donation, and certainly the Eden Prairie Players will be able to put that to good use to enhance their upcoming performances.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept that donation?
I would move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation of $400 from Andy Turner for the Eden Prairie Players discretionary fund to be used for technical aspects.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes, and thank you to Mr. Turner. Donations from the public do support a number of our programs within the park and rec area, and we are very appreciative. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Anything to add or delete, Mr. Getchell?
Mayor, there is one item at your desk you'll see related to a piece of our fire apparatus that we'd like to add to consent. We were recently presented with an opportunity with a piece of our apparatus, one of our aerial trucks, the opportunity to sell one of our aerial trucks to a neighboring city for $500,000, and we actually purchased that piece of apparatus over 12 years ago for $670,000, but we have the opportunity to replace that piece of equipment earlier than we had in our capital improvement plan at a lower cost. So currently, we had a larger aerial truck scheduled to be replaced in 2022 for about $1,000,000. We feel that because we have another aerial, and this would be a second aerial, that we could purchase a smaller aerial for $700,000, and then if we're able to sell this piece of apparatus for $500,000, we're actually only then paying $200,000 as opposed to $1.5 million, discounting that we probably could sell that aerial at a later date, I doubt, for the $500,000. So we're asking you tonight to approve that sale of their current aerial truck to the city of Pine Island as part of the consent item.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Getchell on that new item for the consent calendar? Okay. All right.
I'm confused, what is Item N, then? I thought it was already in the consent.
So we did update the annotated agenda to include that, but it wasn't on the agenda that went out over the weekend or on Friday in the packet.
So it's still in, then?
Still in.
All right, we have a motion and a second agenda approval, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the city council workshop held on Tuesday, November 18?
So moved.
Second.
Any items to correct in those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next item is approval for the city council meeting minutes at that same date.
Second.
Any corrections to those? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. So now we're going to entertain a motion on the consent calendar, Items A through N.
Move approval of Items A through N on the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Any items to question or pull for discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. That brings us to our first public hearing, which is allocation of 2014 community development block grant funds to the prop shop for acquisition of a storage facility. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. We do have our first public hearing to allocate $50,000 of community development block grant funds, so those are dollars that we receive from the federal government in our city to support programs that benefit those with low to moderate income. And so we have, we usually have a kind of annual process for the distribution of those funds, but in this case, we had an opportunity arose with one of our nonprofit agencies' prop shop in our community that is looking to purchase a building nearby to their current building to further expand and improve their program, and so they're looking for assistance from the city through our CDBG program as a down payment for the purchase of that, of that new building. But I know that the project proponent is here and is probably more than willing and interested to give you all an update on the project, so I thought we would allow Cindy Eddy to come up and speak to the project much better than I can, and then you could hold a public hearing.
It's always nice to have you come because you're so excited about coming up and talking to us, and you say such wonderful things about the people in this city, and it's always nice to hear that.
Oh, my gosh, it's so true. Cannot even believe how helpful. Okay, this is so great. We weren't looking, okay, the prop shop, we've got 20 to 25 families a day now. We had 304 families in August, 46 new families, so the numbers continue to increase, and we don't have much space, and we weren't looking to buy a building, this kind of threw itself at us. What happened was, we were going to try and rent space, but it's very expensive, and we're a nonprofit, we don't pay property tax, so that's foolish, and it's always better to own if you could. So this building threw itself at us, and there's only 11 buildings in Eden Prairie that are 10,000 square feet or less, and much less of one that we could afford that's has one building in between the prop and this new building. It's in between the prop shop and prop. The families can walk right across the parking lot, they don't even have to go in the street, they can go around the back. And so what this new building is going to be for primarily is like a showroom for furniture for families, because right now, we go out, we have a list, at all times, we have 40 to 50 families waiting for beds. We had, of this summer, we had 80 families waiting for couches and chairs, always about 35 for dressers, and then tables and chairs. So we don't have any space to go out to a church or something and say, "We need donations", we couldn't handle it. So what really pushed us over the edge was Bob, he's my husband right there, and he drives the, pulls the trailer with boys, and, whoops, sorry, and picks stuff up and delivers it. Well, he ended up going five trips to one house, because now we've got a bed, now we've got a table, now we've got a dresser, so this will be perfect, we'll be able to offer the families more, it'll be more efficient, and then we can go out and really try and get goods. Like, right now, we are in so much trouble for mittens and socks and snow pants, but we can't go out and do anything commercial to, you know, a big place, because we can't, what are we going to do with it? So, and think about this, this is another thing that might be so good, we'll have enough space where we could take sporting goods, baseball shoes and gloves and tennis rackets and things, so maybe we could get a program together to help kids pay for extracurricular stuff, and then we'd have the equipment for them. I mean, how great is that? And then we won't have to have a storage unit and have coats in everybody's basement and guest room and garage, because that's how it's going right now. So this came to us, it is so excellent that the location, we didn't want to do this yet, but this, where are you going to have an opportunity like this, so close to both organizations? So that's why we wanted to do this, so we can really do a better job helping these families. And I can't tell you, that girl over there, that jean kid right there, how much she has done to help us get this put together, so with so many people helping. So that's what we want to do, and we hope you guys really think this is a good idea because we're giddy, and we really appreciate you. Is there anything else? Do you have any questions? Is that what I'm supposed to ask?
You have Cindy speak at every council meeting, just to raise the mood. Just to raise the mood, yeah.
Well, this is so exciting, we're beside ourselves.
Well, Eden Prairie is so fortunate to have you, and all the work that all of your, the whole group of the volunteers, every, every one.
1,800 people have volunteered, 423 active volunteers, and we've helped about 7,500 people, close to 8,000, that's a lot of people in Eden Prairie. This is, this is a big need. Okay, what else can I do?
We don't have any questions, I think.
I've worn all my good luck items, every piece of good luck item I have. Okay, thank you, Cindy. Thank you for your consideration, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, this is a public hearing, so is there anyone else from the audience that wants to address the council on this?
Seeing none, I move to approve the grant agreement with the prop shop to allocate $50,000 in community development block grant funds for acquisition of a property at 14770 Martin Drive to be used as a large item storage warehouse.
Before anyone seconds, should we also have in there to close the public hearing that wasn't done?
Yeah, that should be on that, shouldn't it?
No, but it wasn't, so.
Okay.
So just make that statement, and then I can second it.
All right, so I move to close the public hearing.
Then, oh, do you want a second in units? We both want a second, we're fighting over this.
I want to fight over her good luck charms.
You go ahead.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you for coming tonight, appreciate it. Thanks for the good work you do for our community.
We should all.
Yes, thanks. All right, and next, we have the first and second reading of an ordinance updating our fee schedules for administration of official controls and resolution approving publication of summary ordinance. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and council. In terms of approving fees and budgets for the coming year, it's, I'll try to keep the mood up. Do my, do that.
Good luck following.
I'll try to talk about zoning fees changes being very exciting, but, but it is something we do every year, we have public hearings on, and actions to update our fees. The first public hearing deals with fees that are established by ordinance and are part of our official controls of our city, so you'll see part of the reason we have a 500 and almost 50-page packet is because we put in the detail of every single fee that we have, and what the fee proposed is for 2015 and how it compares to 2014. So you can see that there are fees, at least in this public hearing, related to zoning, subdivision controls, site plan reviews, building inspection fees, building codes, official maps. So we're updating those fees, and you can see we not only show the change in the fee, but the percentage, and you'll notice that the percentage changes are well within the rate of inflation, they're all within, if, some aren't changing at all, and some are changing in the, in the 2% to 3% range, so there really aren't any fees that are an anomaly or sticking out that might not be customary. So we ask that you would hold a public hearing tonight and then take action on both the first and second reading of an ordinance updating our fee schedule.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Getchell? This is a public hearing, is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this new fee schedule for next year? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion?
I just have a question on the first and second reading with, you know, you need the unanimous vote, but you don't need all five of us here?
Correct.
Do you want to make a motion?
Sure. I would move to close the public hearing and approve the, I'm trying to read the verbiage here.
It says second reading, should I say first and second?
Should say first and second. Approve the first and second readings of the ordinance updating the fee schedule for administration of official controls and adopt a resolution approving the summary for publication.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion is successful. Is there anything to add to the resolution updating the fee schedule for city services, Item C? Basically, same thing.
It is, Mayor. The only thing that I would add again is these are, these fees do not, they're not a change by ordinance, so they don't require a first and second reading, you're simply adopting the fee resolution. You're also, you've chosen to hold a public hearing, you don't need to hold a public hearing, but since you hold a public hearing for all of your other fees, we've always customarily held a public hearing for these fees as well. So these would be fees on many charges for services, memberships to the community center. You'll actually notice I mentioned the mayor, there are some new fees in there, such as renting canoes and paddle boats at Round Lake, so ever since the mayor went paddleboarding on Round Lake, huge demand, we have to set a fee, we have to create a program for, for the paddleboards, but, but these are fees by resolution, simple action is needed, but you also do hold a public hearing on that as well.
Okay. Anyone from the audience want to address the council on these fees that aren't subject to state statutes?
Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing and adopt the 2015 fee resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The last item for public hearing is the 2015 budget.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We do request in that, that would be the first item under report to city manager, that you take action tonight to certify, and that is a typo on there, it'll be the 2015 property tax levy and budget and consent to the HRA levy tonight. Prior to holding the hearing, we have a presentation that Tammy Wilson, in our finance division, and myself would like to provide to you as to an overview of the city budget and the components of the city budget, then we would hold a hearing, and then we would take action under the report of the city manager.
Okay, thank you. Tammy?
Thank you, Mr. Getchell. Mayor, council members, and members of the audience, I would like to present to you the 2015 proposed budget. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to solicit public input on the city's proposed budget and tax levy for 2015. It is a requirement of state law and needs to be held after property tax owners have received their proposed property tax statements. Other entities that are holding public hearings are the, are Hennepin County, which is also holding theirs tonight, Eden Prairie Schools, which will hold theirs on December 9th, Metropolitan Council on December 10th, and then the state of Minnesota is not required to hold a public Presented in this graph is a history of the city's market value since 2003. For 2015, the city has seen an increase of 5% in market value, which is bringing us above the 2011 values, but we are still about $1 billion below our high year in 2009. For 2015, the city is proposing a general fund budget of $41,597,466 or a 2.4% increase. For the debt service funds, it's $2,645,100, and for capital improvement, it's $95,369. For an overall budget of $44,337,935 or a 1.9% increase. For 2015, the general fund revenues by category are as follows. Property taxes are increasing 3%. Licenses and permits are stable between the two years due to developmental revenue, which has increased 6% every two years. And the increase for charges for services is due mainly to the increase in revenue at the community center. And the decrease in transfers in is due to fewer one-time items being recognized. This results in the general fund revenues budget of $41,268,691 or a 2.3% increase. The following chart represents the general fund revenues. As you can see, property taxes make up the largest portion at 74%, followed by charges for services at 12%, licenses 8%, intergovernmental revenue 3%, other revenues 2%, and transfers in at 1%. For 2015, the general fund expenditures by departments are as follows. Administration is decreasing due to 2015 being a non-election year. Community development is increasing less than the 3% due to a $15,000 business survey completed in 2014. And fire will see a decrease of $88,000 for their fire relief pension payment, but this is offset by an increase in wages for duty crew. This results in a total general fund expenditures budget of $41,597,466 or a 2.4% increase. The following chart provides a breakdown of the general fund expenditures by departments. Police consists of 32%, park and rec 25%, public works 14%, fire 13%, admin 10%, and community development at 6%. So for 2015, the debt levy is decreasing by $135,000 or 4.9%. This decrease can be attributed to a number of debt. One is the 2006 fire station bonds, which were refunded by the 2012 B fire station bonds. The other is the 2009 equipment certificates, which are decreasing by $475,000 due to debt payments decreasing in 2015. Also, the 2009 fire station facility bonds are decreasing by $200,000 due to being paid off in 2014. And then the park referendum bonds are decreasing due to being refunded by the 2011 C and the 2012 A referendum bonds. And then you'll see an increase for the tax abatement levy, which is for the expansion of the aquatics facility at the community center. The city is proposing a 2015 property tax levy of $32,180,997 or a 2.4% increase. The general fund levy is increasing by $904,422, capital improvement fund by $2,778, and the debt service fund levy is decreasing by $135,000. Also, the fiscal disparities distribution is decreasing by $19,429. For 2015, residential property on, an average residential home has seen an increase of 4.8% in market value. Apartments have seen a 5% increase in market value, and commercial property will see a 0.7% decrease in market value. Therefore, for residential property with a median value home of $339,100, the city tax impact will be $1,154 or an increase of $26 or 2.3%. Apartments with a $5 million value will have a city tax impact of $21,561 or an increase of $450. Commercial property with a $2 million market value will have a city tax impact of $8,468 or a decrease of $300. This slide presents the total property tax impact based on the property tax notices that owners received in November. The total property tax impact includes the county, the schools, the city, and other taxing districts. For a residential property, the total tax impact would be $4,159, which is a decrease of 8%. Per the property tax notices, the school portion of the taxes was decreasing by $359 or 25%. With current information that we have received, we are estimating that the school portion of the taxes will increase by approximately $410 or 29%. Following is a breakdown of the distribution of the property tax, property taxes on a median value home. As you can see, Hennepin County receives the largest portion at 39%. For commercial property with a market value of $2 million, taxes would be distributed accordingly, with the state receiving 27% and fiscal disparities receiving 33%. For a median value home, the property owner would pay $96.17 per month, with $88.37 going to the general fund, $7.53 going to the debt service fund, and 27 cents going to the capital projects fund. Further detail on how the $88.37 allocated to the general fund would be spent is as follows, with police receiving the largest portion at $28.02, and community development receiving the lowest at $4.97. receiving the lowest at $4.97.
And so with that, I will turn it back over to Mr. Getchow. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Does anybody have any questions for her before we go on? Mr. Getchow?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I thought Tammy did a great job of presenting all the detail that relates to the proposed budget and levy and some of the impacts as well. I thought I would have a couple slides here to kind of go to the 30,000-foot level for a second and talk about kind of what goes behind creating a budget such as this and some of the services involved in that as well, and some of the things that we're trying to do to stay a top-notch city. So, the council, as you know, puts together a two-year budget. And in the second year of the two-year budget, which we're in right now, we establish some goals as we move into that budget season. And there are several work sessions and workshops that the council sits down and talks about setting priorities and setting service levels and giving direction to city staff in terms of how we go about preparing a two-year budget and what type of service levels you're looking for. And in many ways, the levy is an outcome of that, and the tax is an outcome of that, but depending on what does happen with property values and with levies and rates, we sometimes do have to adjust to that. In this case, we didn't have to. We were able to establish goals for our city budget over the last two years and especially in 2015, and I think we were able to deliver and will deliver into next year. So there are a few areas where the council set goals related to this budget, and the first has to do with Eden Prairie being a premier city to live and do business in. So some pieces of our budget illustrate a reinvigoration and a growth in some of our community events. So you may have noticed that we put some time and energy and not as much funding as you would think into enhancing our Fourth of July event and also creating new events, such as our Green Echo Palooza event and other several events in the city which we enhanced. In terms of operational levels, the feeling was that public safety is a priority in our community, so the last several budgets included enhancement in public safety. The duty crew was new to our city in the last two or three years, and we've now been working on almost two years under that model. Also, in the last budget and what you'll see in the next budget is the implementation of a truth in housing program where we're looking at a revenue-neutral service to maintain our high-level housing stock, and that also falls under the public safety area as well. You also, we've also heard from our residents through surveys and through our city website and a special city website and through focus groups and other means that continue to ask us to maintain our service levels and not necessarily look for areas to cut, but also look to be more efficient and spend as little money as possible in terms of enhancing those services and also to compare favorably to other communities. So I'm going to talk about that in a few slides as well. Organizationally, we feel it's important to sustain a high level of employee morale and engagement and continue to have our city employees at all departments, at all levels, look for more efficiencies and innovations. And I would say our recognition as a best workplace that we received last year was somewhat of a reflection of a workforce that is engaged, that has high morale, and is looking to continue to be innovative as well. And public outreach and engagement is always a goal of our city council, to share as much information transparently as possible and to have all of our budget data, capital improvement data and other data available here at City Hall, on our website, on our special new City Connect website, and just continue to have the conversation with residents regarding our budget. So the feeling is that those goals established were met. So when you look at some of the efficiencies, some current efficiencies and innovations that I'd like to point out that we're working on, do deal with making our city what I would call a 24/7 operation. You should be able to have a service request, bring up an issue, or even schedule an inspection or apply for a building permit any time of the day and online through any means or method. So we continue to move in that direction as well. I'd also like to, we're always looking for ways to partner with other agencies to save money, to collaborate, and also to focus on saving dollars in energy, which you've received updates at recent council workshops and meetings as to meeting our goals for 2040-15. The one service I'd like to highlight, and I'd like to call it a service delivery success story, has been our snow plowing. We've invested some time and some money and quite a bit in our workforce to continue to enhance our snow plowing operation. In the last two years, we have seen some record amounts of snowfall, but I would argue that we're actually doing a better job of getting there sooner, doing better, and monitoring the product that we use and exactly where all our equipment goes. And in fact, we'll be looking at doing even more innovation and tracking and using technology to improve our snow plowing and fleet services in the future. In terms of other upcoming initiatives, I mentioned the point-of-sale program. And also, I think I'd mention quickly because the council's aware of this, as we reach the end of 2040-15 and reach that goal, what's next? What other program do we need to establish that will set a goal for energy efficiency and dollar savings and reducing our carbon footprint? That's something that's going to come in 2015, and we're going to be talking about that in the first quarter of next year. When you think about the value, the value proposition of what Tammy mentioned in terms of what that tax bill is next year, last year, and again, next year, as I said, we do compare ourselves. We don't set our levy based on what area communities are doing, but we like to reflect back and say we have a good value for what we deliver. So we belong to an organization called the MLC, and it's a group of 12 cities that are of similar demographic and makeup as Eden Prairie. It's the Adinas, the Bloomingtons, the Woodberries, the Maple Groves, similar suburbs of similar nature. And if you look at the current tax rate that we have, we are the third lowest city tax rate of those 12 cities. So I spent some time last year talking about examples where there might be another city in another area where someone might say, for instance, my taxes are lower in Chanhasan or Victoria than they are in Eden Prairie. The total tax bill may be, that may be the case, but in terms of the city portion of your tax bill, our city portion is lower. The portion that you as a city council control, the levy that you set, we happen to be in Hennepin County, not Carver County, not Dakota County. We happen to be in the Prairie School District as opposed to another school district, even though our school district is very competitive as well. But the area that we can control with the city tax rate, we are one of the lowest of comparable cities. And even if you put in the 108 cities in the metro area, I would fathom that we are also kind of in that bottom third. So the idea is we deliver a high level of service, but we think we're continuing to do that at a very reasonable price. Also, we're a city that does not rely on much of any outside local government aid or any aid from any level of government. So LGA, something that we do not receive, is something that many other cities do as a mechanism to reduce their levy. So our levy would be lower if we had a revenue source of LGA. But not only that, we participate in a seven-county metro commercial tax-based sharing program where the growth in commercial property, a large percentage of that goes into a pool and is then spread back out to the cities, which, in a program called fiscal disparities. Under that program, after Bloomington, we're the second-largest contributor into that program. And someone may say, well, what does that have to do with my taxes? What it means is, as a city, being the number-two contributor, if that regional tax-based sharing program did not exist, and I'm not here to judge the efficacy of the program, I'm just simply saying that if it did not exist, the average, that median-valued home at Eden Prairie would pay $1,041 or almost 10% less in taxes if that regional tax-bearing, tax-sharing program didn't exist. And as you know, earlier, we had a workshop with our legislators, our state legislators, and fiscal disparities is something that even if it's not eliminated or reformed, we're hoping for more transparency, to educate our residents that the commercial property growth that we see in our community, we're paying into a regional program, and that has an effect on the local tax bill. So I think that's an important element as well. So when you look at what we provide for what's paid, again, I would say it's a reasonable value. We have a high service level to our 62,000 residents, 2,500 businesses, and 36 square miles in our community with all of our services that are provided. We, when we look at this budget that we're asking you to take action on, you're looking at a 2015 budget that comes in at less than 2%. You're looking at a tax levy that very much stays within, if not below, the current inflation levels at 2.4%. We're looking, we are a AAA-rated city, the highest-rated city that a financial institution could give us by two institutions. You also notice that we compare favorably with other communities, and that tax rate is continuing to be reduced. Even though our levy might increase slightly, our city tax rate does project to go down once again next year, and we are able to create a budget that does not rely on many other levels of government or many other funding programs to remain supportive, meaning if there were cuts to certain programs, which then does threaten the service levels in some communities, that's not something we deal with. We very much control our own destiny. So with that, I or Finance are open any questions you have, but we do ask that you open the hearing and then later on you can take action on the levy and the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Getchow. Any questions for Mr. Getchow? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on the budget for 2015? No one? Okay. Is there a motion?
I would move to close the public hearing.
I would move to close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Wilson and Mr. Getchow for that presentation. Payment of claims is next. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please. First of all, any items to question there?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Roll call, please. Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Case?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Tara Locens?
Aye.
Report of city manager, resolution certifying the 2015 property tax levy, adopting the 2015 budget and consenting and approving the 2015 HRA tax levy. Mr. Getchow?
Mayor, as I said earlier, this is the action to adopt a resolution approving the tax levy for 2015 and the budget and consenting to the HRA levy.
Any questions for Mr. Getchow? Is there a motion, or Councilmember Nelson?
Not really a question, but I think we should say thank you to Mr. Getchow for providing us with a budget that does keep our services and at the same time keep our taxes very reasonable. And also, the whole staff for working so hard for innovation and new ways and better ways of doing things for the city. And I think at the time we're doing this, is a great time to say thank you to them.
Yeah, thank you for that comment. Councilmember Case?
Maybe just to further add to that, clarify that they helped to develop the budget in its written form, but we developed, of course, the budget over our meetings after meetings after meetings over the last year. So this has been a long work in progress, and so thank you for your work in that and all the rest of us for, I've often heard that with a city council, there's nothing really more important that we do, even though people in the audience tonight may not necessarily be representative of the high level of importance of this. But the budget is our very personality, and it really reflects our values as a city, but also as a council. So incredibly important what we're doing tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom?
Yeah, just one more thing to say about that, and that is, I think all of us really appreciate the efficiencies, the innovations, and really all of the deep thinking and new ideas that are coming forward from the staff about how we can operate really better. And so I thank you for all of that, too. I know we all care very much about innovations. So thank all of you.
Thank you. Thank you all for those comments. Do we have a motion here?
Move to adopt a resolution certifying the 2015 property tax levy to be $33,792,311 and approve the 2015 budget of $44,337,935 as reviewed by the council and consent and approve the HRA tax levy and budget of $200,000. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. The next item is a resolution approving the 2015 to 2024 CIP, the capital improvement plan. Mr. Getchow?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Every other year, the city council approves after, again, deliberation, because you've had workshops related to your CIP, approving every other year a 10-year CIP. And actually, this would be, I believe, the second time you'd be approving a 10-year CIP, because previously, we used to only prepare five-year CIPs. But we want to be able to look out further and forecast even further what our capital needs are. So tonight, our finance manager, Sukha Chivver, would like to provide a presentation, an overview of the 10-year CIP, and ask that you then take action to approve that.
Your honor, council members, members of the audience, I'm pleased to present a summary of the 2015-2024 capital improvement plan. Some of the objectives of the plan include, we use it as, help us to plan for capital maintenance and improvement, so that's why we prepare the plan. It provides consistent investment in city equipment, facilities, and infrastructure, and it preserves and expands our capital in a way that's sustainable and affordable. And we have some policies regarding capital. We try to keep all of our borrowing to projects that we can't finance from current revenues, and when we do issue debt, we want to pay that debt back over the life of the project and no longer. And we try to maintain a sound relationship or a good relationship with all of the rating agencies and keep them updated with what we're doing and make decisions that are favorable business and finance decisions so that we can maintain our rating. It is a 10-year plan, and we plan for projects that generally cost $25,000 or more, and our liquor profits are a dedicated funding source to our capital improvement plan. So this is a summary by division of the dollar amounts in the CIP. You can see at the bottom, the total is $267 million. The last CIP that we updated, that was from 2013 to 2022, the total was $254 million, so it's relatively consistent. You can see the largest department is engineering at $150 million, and that does include a lot of transportation projects, as you might imagine. And the police department is $142,500. They're the smallest department. There's a couple vehicles in there and a couple of small, other small items. And I'll cover a few of the other bigger projects a little bit later in the presentation. And this slide shows how we pay for all of the projects. You can see there's funding sources from the city at about $135 million total, and then there's also outside funding sources of about $131 million. So internally, we pay about $48 million from the city's enterprise fund, so that includes our utility fund, our water fund, our sewer fund, and our storm drainage fund. About $8.5 million is planned to come from the city's tax increment financing districts, money that we have in the bank or that we'll be collecting in the future. And then $78 million in other city funds, which I will detail in a slide shortly. And then the other funding sources, those are, many of that's for transportation projects. It's either assessments or municipal state aid or from the Minnesota Department of Transportation. So $78 million comes from other city funds. You can see the top two is our pavement management fund that helps to pay for our pavement management program, and most of those funds come from a franchise fee that's charged to citizens on the electric and gas bill every month. And also, our capital maintenance and reinvestment fund, that's the fund that pays for all city, for all capital that does not have another funding source. That's where the liquor profits go into and other miscellaneous revenue, such as antenna revenue. And then anytime we have other one-time revenue, we usually recommend that it goes into that fund. And then anytime we have other one-time revenue, we usually recommend that it goes into that fund. So again, the outcomes include, um, 267 million funded through 2024, 135 million from the city, 132 from other funds. There's no new tax levy for debt in the CIP until 2024 and that includes two fire engines. So that's quite a ways out. And so this plan helps us to maintain stable tax impacts as it relates to the capital side of city operations. So let us go over some of the larger projects in the CIP. So for engineering and public works, engineering and our transportation has about 158 mil- 50 million over the 10 years. And, um, public works has 28 million. So really trying to maintain and expand our transportation projects. So the larger projects are Shady Oak Road South that everybody knows about, that that will be substantially completed next year. Um, county state aid highway 61, which is going to be upgraded, I understand, in 2016 and 2017 in southwest Eden Prairie. The Valley View Road and 169 interchange is scheduled for 202021. And then also Trunk Highway 101 in northwest Eden Prairie is scheduled for an upgrade in 2021 as well. Those are the four biggest, largest transportation projects. Also, as we mentioned, the pavement management program. The city has 230 miles of street that needs to be maintained. We have what's called a pavement condition index of, um, where the streets are rated between a zero and 100 and the quality of the roads in Eden Prairie. And Eden Prairie has about an 80 in the pavement condition index. And we want to keep it at that, so we invest every year in maintaining our roads. For park and recreation, there's, um, about $20 million budgeted over the 10-year period. It's includes developing the last neighborhood park, which is Cedar Hills Park. It also includes improvements to Miller Park, which is a picnic pavilion, Round Lake, um, Phase Two project. There's some Riley Lake Park renovation that's going to occur and also, um, grading and maintaining the flying cloud fields. Includes, um, funds for maintaining and adding trails and sidewalks in Eden Prairie. And it also maintains all of the park facilities, the tennis courts, the play equipment, all of those sorts of things. And then community development has about $14 million over the 10 years. It does include Presbyterian Homes and Prairie Center Drive Streetscape Project. That's budgeted, I believe, for 2016 and also some housing rehab and first-time home buyer program. Some other projects include funds to replace the city's public safety radio system. We also, um, uh, use 31 buildings in this, for the city, so to maintain all of our buildings and our IT infrastructure. And then last but not least is the utility infrastructure of the city. There's 5 million budgeted to, um, uh, reinvest in the sewer system. There's 12 million invested for the stormwater utility. I believe there's about 18 projects, various water quality projects and other projects budgeted. And also 24 million for the water utility. Um, two substantial projects include replacing all of the water meter readings and also some ground storage facility. These are some very large projects and we do anticipate issuing debt for those projects in the next couple of years. So you'll be hearing about that in the future. As Mr. Getchow, um, mentioned, we do have a AAA bond rating. We've had that since 2003. That does allow us to borrow when we do need to borrow at the lowest ta- uh, the lowest rate possible. And also in 2000, in this year, we were also recognized by Standard and Poor's with the AAA bond rating as well. So, that's what I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Cheever? Thank you for this, um, overview of our Capital Improvement Plan. I think some of us that have been on the council a long time remember when we didn't have any Capital Improvement Plan and how important that was to get it going. So it's great to see that we've got it and we're planning for 10 years out. That's wonderful. Thank you. Is there a motion for, um, adoption?
I would move to adopt a resolution approving the 2015 to 2024 Capital Improvement Plan.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Brings us to reports from our Park and Rec Director, Mr. Lotthammer, on several things. The first being, uh, the aquatic expansion update.
Your Honor, Councilmembers, I'm gonna stay seated so I can use the mouse and show, highlight some of the photos that I show you tonight. But what I'd like to do is give you an overview of what's taken place so far at the Aquatic Center. It seems like every week you drive by, it looks a little bit different. And so to start out, I'm just gonna remind you with a couple of the drawings that we had and you've seen many of these, but I think this will help you orientate yourself when I show you more dirt and brick and block. So hopefully this will be helpful. But, uh, here it is on Valley View, um, kind of what you would see if you were driving towards the high school. A lot of windows looking in where the two of the larger pools are. This bump out is where the diving boards are at the back of the pool. Um, and around here is where our front entrance is. And that, uh, shows this, this a little bit better, our front entrance here. Um, the new, the current front entrance is over here, but this will be the new aquatics entrance. You'll see this hallway pretty pronounced when we get to some of the construction pictures. Um, this is, uh, the windows right here are a conference training room. This is where the restrooms are. And right along here is the dryland training, uh, area. Again, uh, moving into the hallway, here you can see some people, imaginary people in the meeting room. Um, this is looking as if you were going from the school, um, heading towards the community center looking left. And what this one shows you in particular is, um, more of the windows looking into the, um, zero depth or more of the, uh, warm water pool, as well as this extra height over here is what accommodates the slide. This, uh, shows you from, directly from the west where you do get to see in towards the slide. This does see into the leisure pool as well as the hot tub is, uh, kind of over in this corner of the building. Um, just again orientating you, um, you walk in, this is a main hallway. You're gonna see that pretty pronounced in the construction photos. You're gonna start to see some of this taking shape with the dryland training, the restrooms, the meeting room, the bleachers, the two pools. Here again, as I showed you that bump out where the diving boards are, climbing wall. And you'll also see in the construction photos, you'll see in this area, that's where all of our, um, equipment is that runs the pool. What you're not gonna see yet is Phase Two, which is the zero-depth area. Um, and that will begin, once we get to June, and the main Phase One is opened up. Then we'll be able to demo the current pool and start to work on, uh, the zero-depth and the slide, which brings us to the end of, uh, the year, next year, 2016, or 2015, I'm sorry, um, where we are able to open up both phases. So we're about seven months away from this phase and we're about a year away from this phase and being fully open and operational. Um, this shows you, uh, just a little different diagram where the, uh, water slide was called out on the overall first floor. This shows the overall second floor above that hallway. And I'll show you some, uh, pictures of the floor that will be the second floor. Um, we add on the fitness area and the expanded fitness studio. So these are some renderings as if you were looking out at Valley View, as you were looking up at that second floor where the new fitness expansion will be, looking down on the pool. Um, this looks through to the dry, or to the, uh, zero-depth area. This is if you were sitting in our bleachers looking out. This is the, uh, shallow area of the zero-depth, the water slide, going into the more of the small lap area of the warm water and the hot tub in the back, windows looking out. And this is the area where you would cross in to where the two competitive pools are at, is just right back in that area. So we're gonna take you back to what a lot of you remember, June 9th of 2014, a sunny, warm day, um, for the groundbreaking, which was pretty exciting. Had our, uh, swim club was present and some of the kids that will ultimately be swimming in the pools were helping, uh, break ground and turn over some dirt. What I will point out to you, this is Mr. Getchow on the far right here. And, um, about where this shovel was put down, um, one of the things we unfortunately discovered early on was a burrow pit. And what that is, is some bad material that at another day and time, maybe when a road went through and the soils weren't quite good enough, it was put over into this section about right where Mr. Getchow's shovel is. And so right out of the chute, we encountered some bad soils and we had to amend that. And, uh, fortunately, it wasn't far and wide, but it, uh, put us back just a little bit and added a little bit of cost, but certainly cost that, um, to date has remained within our contingency of, of the project. But, uh-
I had, I had a feeling, but I didn't, I don't want to say anything.
Yeah.
When my shovel hit that day, I-
Had you been standing, you know, right where I was, just a couple feet away, you wouldn't have hit that, which, that's surprising. So construction gets going and, and what you don't see is that, um, there is a lot of pipe underneath this dirt and a lot of, just to get this to more of a flat grade, took a lot of grading. Um, as you get oriented here, the construction trailer, this is gonna become the hallway that will show up in, in some pictures coming forward. Uh, but a lot of concrete gets poured and you'll see a lot of, uh, forms and walls and, and concrete pourings happening throughout this. Um, there was a great day when, uh, we knew that concrete was in short supply and, uh, I came to the community center in the morning and there were six concrete trucks lined up. That was a pretty exciting day for us, that we got them instead of the Viking Stadium. So that kept us going, uh, moving along on track. Um, as you get to July, you'll see more of that pipe that ends up going into the ground. In the bottom right, these are storm ponds and it's meant to handle any of the additional storm water that has, um, come off the building with the, the more roof structure to it. So those actually got, uh, constructed very well, have fabric on top of them. They already have seed growing, some of the, we actually used some, uh, small plants so it'd get started a little bit faster. And so this spring, you'll start to see the fabric disappear and it'll actually green up for us. So we'll see some good progress right away there. Starting to, to, uh, take shape, um, this is actually the storage areas underneath what will become the bleachers. Um, so it starts to take some form and you're also seeing, again, that hallway, uh, taking form and shape. An exciting day, once walls actually start to go up. It seemed like it took quite a long time, but as we got to September, you see some of the walls, uh, coming into place. This is that dryland training area. You can see the blanket and some of the rock on the storm ponds, um, the bathrooms. And you'll get to see a little more pipe as we get going, that'll help you signify the restrooms. Um, eventually, these won't be construction workers. They'll be swimmers or volleyball players in the dryland training area working out. Um, this will be the, uh, meeting room. Again, you're seeing those storage rooms that'll be underneath the bleachers. Another, uh, pour of cement, um, hauling in some other, uh, material. You see these large pipes that end up into the ground. Um, again, even taking more shape, restrooms right here where we're digging some pipe below ground. Um, wall gets another layer in height. And this is where those bleachers are gonna go up, right in this area. And this entire wall back here on the second floor will be the wall that's behind the bleachers. And that'll become more significant as I move forward in that it's a large wall that we don't want to have as just a large brick block looking wall. And we'll show you some of our thoughts and ideas for public art in order to make use of that space. Um, again, we get another story up. We start to get even more scaffolding in place. There was a day that I proclaimed Happy Plank Day. Uh, the day that there were many trucks with these roof planks on was a pretty significant day for the project. And, um, again, it seems like when I pull in there in the morning and the trucks are queued up and in line, you can kind of see some of the magnitude of what it takes to start to get a roof on. So this was our first time that we had a, uh, cover onto the building and that's covering, again, that dryland training and the meeting room and bathroom. And you're starting to see how they're gonna move up and make those bleachers a reality as well. Um, more hallway pieces, getting ready to accept the roof planks that go on that. And this is that second floor fitness area that will eventually, you'll see treadmills and a fitness studio that look down into the pool. Uh, the mechanical area for all of the, uh, the mechanical equipment that goes in there. Here again, another wall that's starting to take shape where you'll look out on your treadmill or elliptical down into the pool area. Starting in November to get some interior walls in place. Um, now you're looking at, uh, again, that, uh, kind of look into the, um, dryland training where the restroom will be. Um, this is looking down the main hallway as if you walked in. There's another piece of public art that I'll show you that, um, is scheduled to go into this area. Um, we're getting some new locker room walls. These pictures are as of today, um, as well as now starting to define those walls between the bathroom and the meeting rooms. This looks a little bit more, uh, familiar like it is the, uh, the TCF Bank Stadium that you need to shovel off before a, a gopher game, but these are those bleachers. And as of significant, this is a, uh, the wall that I was pointing out that is gonna be, it's 92 feet wide. It's, um, 12 feet high. And you'll see it if you're standing on top of the bleachers, but you'll also see it all the way across the pool area. So as we've been working with artists, we've been directing them to think about, what if you're standing within five feet away from this 92-foot wide wall? How does it appear? What if you're standing across two pools? How does it appear as a large mural? So these are some of the finals that we've been looking at. Each one of these is a different mural, one, two, three, four, and five. Um, we're working with the artists to give them feedback. We've been working with, uh, some of our user groups, brought it to the Parks Commission to really think about what would be a good signature piece, um, for that wall. And, uh, obviously very significant in size. The other piece of public art, we've been working with the Fox Jets. As you know, they're out, uh, raising funds, both in corporate sponsorships, but also for individuals. And if you go back to the third sheet of ice in the Hockey Association, when you walk into that third arena and look to the right, there's a glass block wall and it has names etched in it at different levels of funding. This is a similar concept that the Fox Jets are working with. The difference here, we've been working with a company called Mercury Mosaic. And that, uh, is, the agreement with them is on, uh, the agenda immediately after this, uh, presentation for your consideration. And what they would do, and this, you have to use a little imagination 'cause certainly, um, these colors don't look like what the handmade tiles would look like and these stamps are only to be representative. Um, but it looks a little more like what's in the corner, only with this color scheme and some, uh, circles. But as we've, uh, met with them, worked with them, the Fox Jets would, um, for different levels of donations, you would be able to have your name, um, stamped into these handmade tiles and it would become a, a signature piece of public art immediately as you walk into the, uh, facility. So it's something that we're pretty excited about. We visited their site in, uh, Northeast Minneapolis where they do the construction of these tiles. We brought along some of the members of the Fox Jets to look at it with us as well. And, um, it will be very unique, um, yet it has the same characteristics as the block wall or the brick pavers that we've used in a lot of concepts. But I really think this takes it a little more, quite a bit more to that public art and more of a signature piece for the, uh, Aquatic Center. So with that, I'd certainly answer any questions. We're, we're basically on schedule to open Phase One in June. Um, as we get closer, we'll start to put some grand opening plans in place. After that, Phase Two, looks like we would be ready to open that fully in the end of the year, uh, mid to late December. So we're only about a year away from being completely done.
Great. Councilmember Nelson?
Where does a person go if they, you want your name on one of these, um, tiles to donate?
Yeah, so that, um, program or project by the Fox Jets is just getting started. Um, and they have a website, uh, a link from their website, Fox Jet website, that brings you, so you could do it online. You may also receive a knock at, at the door. They really see this as a grassroots effort where they are challenging their swimmers. Um, and so what can take place, if somebody only wants to give a small amount, um, the swimmers can aggregate all that and maybe put it, um, in the name of the family or in their name. Um, but there, there are different levels that people can contribute to that are recognized at that level. But certainly, um, off the Fox Jets website, it can take you right to it and you can do it right online. Or, again, you might hear some swimmers knocking at doors throughout the community as they work on this fundraising effort.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathy. Good question. Um, any other questions for Mr. Lotthammer? Looks pretty exciting.
Yes.
It's fun to get that overview of how it looks from week to week.
Yeah, we'll continue to take those photos, uh, you know, on a weekly, sometimes even daily- basis to, some of it's for documentation, for construction purposes after the fact, but also it works well to kind of see it progress as it moves along.
So that little bit of soil problem was really the only big surprise?
Um, you know, the only big surprise, yes. We've had some other changes along the way. Some of them, as we moved to get the project design going, we did not include some of the security hardware in there that we would like to have. And so we're working with that contingency budget to make those kinds of, you know, value-based decision of, should we put, you know, get the wiring in now, but not the hardware? Should, will we have enough hardware dollars left for the hardware and the security cameras down the road, or does that have to wait? So when we looked at the approval of the project, there was about a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar contingency. We're at less than that in contingency, but it, some of it's a thousand dollars, five-hundred dollars. When we looked at the glass that you see, the color to help with mitigate some of the direct light for the sun, the color that was originally specked, we weren't that happy when we saw the actual sample of it. And so in order to change that out in a special painting process that had to happen to get what we really think will be a good color and do a good job, that was a five-hundred-dollar change that we made. So there's some things in that order of five-hundred thousand, or five-hundred, five-thousand, and there's some of those things that are in that forty-thousand range that we continue to work with along the way to make those tweaks.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Appreciate the overview. Mr. Motion to Approve.
I would move to approve the twenty-thousand-dollar professional service agreement with Mercury Mosaics to design, fabricate, and install a donor appreciation wall in the Community Center Aquatics Expansion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Next, we have a report from our Public Works Director, an approval of the pedestrian and bicycle plan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. So if you recall, on November eighteenth, I had presented an overview of the City of Eden Prairie Pedestrian and Bicycle Master Plan, and there was a comment that was made about amending a certain section about ancillary end-of-trip rest facilities, and so we did make that change to include senior housing and multifamily housing. Outside of that, the plan is relatively as presented on November eighteenth. I will say that we've got a very good response from the general public. I think there are a lot of people that are eager to see this plan move into the implementation phase. So that's good to know that we've got some community support behind us. And in fact, I was just contacted yesterday by representatives of Pedal, Minnesota. It's a conference that is held every spring, and they've asked us to present this to that group in the springtime. So I think that this has been a very successful plan. It's received a lot of public input that helped inform the plan, and I think that it gives us a good guide into the future of where we want to take that infrastructure as our community gets a little bit older, and we try to connect some of those neighborhoods that right now, there's a difficulty getting across key intersections and key arterials.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lottus? Okay, we had a great overview of that pedestrian plan at our last meeting, so is there a motion for approval?
Sure. I move to approve the City of Eden Prairie Pedestrian and Bicycle Plan.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. That brings us to the end of the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting's closed. Thanks.